Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner for the Record Brent Spain. Carrier in Spain eighteen oh nine in Water Drive, Orlando, Florida. I appreciate the opportunity to appear before you this evening. I had the obligation to appear before you a couple of weeks ago. And I appreciate your patience then. And I'm going to ask you to indulge me a little bit this evening. It would probably help keep some butts in the seat. Obviously, I'm sort of honored. My name was mentioned quite a bit there on the presentation. So as a, I've got a few housekeeping matters that I need to do before we jump into the revised presentation. One is, I'd like to introduce a hard copy of our presentation into the record. Clerk, see, it's the same thing that's on the screen on stage at G P S. Also, a binder of exhibits. Most of these documents, if not all of them, are referenced in the PowerPoint. But so that there's no allegation that they weren't introduced in the record. I do have a binder. Instead of records clear, because there's court reporter. I'm going to briefly run through what they are. It's a binder with twenty-two tabs. Behind tab one is a planning analysis that was prepared by Laura J. Dedenbach, Ph.D., AICP, Dana Jean seven, two thousand and twenty-three. All of you have been provided a courtesy copy of that. Behind tab two is the resume of Dr. Dedenbach. Behind tab three is the resume of myself, law-certified attorney in city county and local government law. Behind tab four is the city commission meeting minutes from March ninth, two thousand and twenty-three. They were introduced at the last hearing. But again, just dotting i's, crossing t's. Behind tab five are the deeds for Ms. Binkler's property. Again, those were introduced last hearing. It's just a matter of housekeeping. Behind tab six are the Martin County cases that Mr. Williams lifted, including copies of the City of Stewart ordinances that were added here in that case. There's no allegation that, just based on the maps, that the record's incomplete. I want you to have the ordinances. Behind tab seven are the minutes of this board's meeting on April ninth, two thousand and twenty. We may recall that's when the Eighth Amendment to the JPA was approved. Behind tab eight is the City of Winter Garden Development Review Committee memorandum dated April twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-two. That's referenced in the PowerPoint. Behind tab nine is a letter from the West Arms Country Club that the city received on January ninth, two thousand and twenty-two, that's two thousand and twenty-three. And on tab ten is the applicant's petition, or application for annexation of the zoning. Behind tab eleven are, is a copy of the JPA and all eight amendments. So that the record's complete, all of that JPA says. Behind tab twelve, this is something we're going to talk about in a couple of minutes. It's excerpts from Chapter one seventy-one, annexation law. Behind tab thirteen are pocket maps from the cases that we've cited. Behind tab fourteen is an email correspondence from Ms. Binkler to the city back in October of two thousand and twenty-two, and what she raised, played issue of other issues. The issue should not have been a surprise to the city, raised a month ago. Behind tab fifteen is an email correspondence by John Olaga to Mr. Pash dated October sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, with their engineer's response to Ms. Binkler's comments. Behind tab sixteen is an email from John Olaga to Dan Langley and this person dated January ninth, two thousand and twenty-three. Behind tab seventeen is an Orange County info map showing wetlands in the area. Behind tab eighteen, this is something that will be referenced in the PowerPoint, is the plat for Orchard Hills, phase one. Behind tab nineteen is the plat for Stillwater Crossings. Behind tab twenty is the Orange County property praiser map, Pram. Behind twenty-one, tab twenty-one is a staff report for Tilden Place dated August thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen. And then behind tab twenty-two is an Orange County info map in the aerial oversight. So I'd ask you to move these into the record here. One more for housekeeping things before we get into slides, because I'm sure you'd rather look at the slides. Uh, one, to preserve the record, I want to object to the lack of cross-examination on the annexation. As you know, this is the third hearing we've had in this matter. Now, we have staff offering comments regarding the annexation in response to our presentation. We're being provided no opportunity to try to impeach that testimony, including the addition of a new alleged expert witness. So I want the record to reflect that. I object to that. Quickly, I'm going to jump through some points about the remarks that were made. And then I'm going to demonstrate my accolade here, erroneous, in my slide presentation. Real quickly, on the on-plate, you heard Ms. Carson indicate, well, it's not an on-plate because it can still access the property via Tilden Road. Well, that's the whole point, as you see, is why it is an on-plate. That's the second definition of an on-plate. The only way we can access this property is by traveling through the city on Tilden Road. The fact that Tilden Road is a county road to your relevant, that's the city of the pockets. And we'll talk about that in a few moments. There were remarks about wetlands on the south of the property and alleged alterations to those. That has no relevance to whether or not pockets created. But so the record is complete because this allegation has been made before. In fact, this is something Ms. Binkler alluded to. When she complained about flooding on her property, suddenly she was cited by Orange County with a notice of violation for alleged wetland alterations. I have a copy of that notice of violation. I'd also like to introduce a copy of the letter from February fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, from Orange County to Ms. Binkler, advising that no further action will be taken. There was no improper alterations of the wetlands, as alleged, but it's a permitted agricultural use of the site. Part by Ms. Carson about traffic safety. And that's, you haven't heard anything about it. There were multiple lay witnesses testified last hearing about the accidents. In fact, you're a new expert this evening, even acknowledge there have been multiple serious accidents on that roadway and on those curves, including people going in the pond. So there's CSE on the traffic safety issue. There was a remark about the setbacks, and we've taken in tons of stuff into consideration. There are only three houses. Ms. Carson didn't mention to you all, and we're going to mention in my presentation, is the setback on those three houses is exactly the same as in Tilden Place. It is twenty-five feet. The applicant's lawyer just made a statement that there's a twenty-five-foot buffer plus an additional twenty-five-foot setback for fifty feet. That is not accurate unless they just submit a new plan within the last twenty-four hours. It's not in our agenda packet. But again, you'll see that on the PowerPoint. There was a remark about, well, there's going to be this tall bamboo. I'm going to show you right now in our presentation from last meeting. There's no bamboo proposed along the back of those three lots. It's left out. They're only proposing bamboo on the common area. Ms. Carson commented about it in her conclusion that the impact of three homes won't interfere with the reasonable use of the property. I'm going to, again, watch through the presentation, but briefly, I don't think it's reasonable to get thrown from a horse and suffer a concussion. I don't think it's reasonable that horses suffer head damage running into horns. And I don't think it's reasonable to not be able to use substantial portions of your property. There was a remark about, what if they went to Orange County? I represent developers, I represent abors, and I represent local governments. Such a reason they're not going to Orange County. I can assure you, they'll be walking into Orange County if they could get more units than they could get from you. And I'm going to show you the comprehensive plan policy that Ms. Carson didn't mention. That right now, in the county, they get a whopping one dwelling unit per ten acres. So they get three units on that property. Ms. Carson speculated about what Orange County and Orange County Commissioners would have approved on the Tilden Place site. I simply submit, she has no knowledge of the county commissioners who live with you. That's submitted, never went to the county commissioner's hand, or come tomorrow. Mr. Williams commented and suggested that I'm wrong about Martin County cases. I'm going to show you why you're actually right, in my opinion, on those Martin County cases. He also selectively accused me of selectively quoting from the statute. I'm going to read the whole statute to you, I mean, on the on-plate. He's leaving out the word or between A and E. And lastly, on these points before we jump in, the traffic engineer for the applicant. Notably, she talked about their new subdivision on the north side of the street. I don't think that's absolutely accurate. There's a little ridge there. We're talking about building a subdivision, and inevitably, there are going to be kids in the subdivision. Unless it's only fifty-five and has a prohibition on them, those kids are going to want to go see their friends play. And the only way to get there is either they ride their bike on Tilden Road itself, or they cross Tilden Road to get to the existing sidewalk network, which is on the north side. And again, we're going to see it in my slides, but you don't have to take my word for it. The applicants themselves put on their site plan that putting in a crosswalk would create an unsafe traffic, death training situation. I guess we're supposed to just assume that no parents, no kids, no pets, no one's ever going to cross that road on a bicycle or a train of thought. It's also alluded to that the city's not requiring sidewalks on the south side. And that's news to me because it's a condition in the ordinance that's before you this evening. With that said, I'm going to jump into my PowerPoint. I'm going to go through the slides that are complicated from last time quicker, but there are some new slides that I need to address so the record's complete. Mr. Arlen already rendered in on the standards on this. I don't necessarily disagree with him on any of that. I would just emphasize the last look point on the screen. It's the applicant's burden to demonstrate compliance with all the requirements, not four of six, not five of six, not a, well, a couple, but not all of them, all. All means all. Everything in your comp plan, everything in your land development code, all will be criteria for the annexation and reasoning. So these first four slides go to what occurred at the May twenty-fifth hearing. There was a suggestion that our presentation was near legal argument and didn't constitute competent substantial evidence. There was also a suggestion that the late testimony you heard was near speculation appeared. First off, our presentation, and you have a copy of it from before, and you're going to see some more. It contains aerial photos, maps, site plans, photographs, traffic data, and videos. That's all competent substantial evidence under Florida law. The suggestion that it's just legal argument, respectfully, is incorrect. You also had late testimony from firsthand folks, fact-based testimony regarding traffic accidents, including a penalty, injuries to horses, injuries to trainers, inability to use equipment, and portions of the horse farm, the noise generated in the homes, again, within twenty-five feet of the horse farm, and the harassment of horses by feds, et cetera, within twenty-five feet of the horse farm. So again, that's settled. I'm going to read those cases. They stand on their own, but that's competent substantial evidence. All these cases involve the files. There's also a suggestion at the May twenty-fifth hearing that the staff report in and of itself constitutes competent substantial evidence, and I respectfully disagree with that. There are situations where a staff report can ring the competent substantial evidence without. But it's going to have discussion that's actually relevant and evidence that's relevant to the issue that's being decided. And we'll see on one of my slides why I think the staff report is sufficiently deficient. But in case you don't want to dig my word for it, I've got the Elliott Point case right there, highlighted. Documents which should we state that the project complies with all court requirements cannot be considered competent substantial evidence. If a court were to accept this argument, no decision of any governmental body could ever be challenged. They just say, well, the staff report says it needs it. You lose. That's not the law. And then the court went on to say, a broad statement that the project complies with all the requirements in the city land development codes, a conclusion of law, so I'm going to add that in the first place. This is such fine, on the initial presentation, but there's been this suggestion that somehow the city must annex the property because it's in the city's utility service area. This evening, I actually had your comp plan policy before me because I didn't have it during the rebuttal last hearing. You'll see the underlying text is the key language. It says, "The city shall require annexation when legally possible." You're not required to annex property just because they asked for utilities. In fact, you can give them utilities even if they're in the county, and you have this wonderful ability under the statute to charge them twenty-five percent more, something that wasn't mentioned at the last hearing. Two more slides, I think, about last hearing. One, there was this property rights suggestion. This got brought up back in March, too, that somehow the city could face a claim for substantial damages if the applications were denied. First off, if the annexation is denied for failing to comply with state law, there's no claim for damages. The applicant can file, it's called a petition for re-derception or re-derception, I've cited, and can challenge if denied. There's no claim for monetary damages under that statute. There's no claim under the JPA. In fact, I cited the JPA right here and underlined it. "No right or cause of action shall accrue upon or by reason hereof to or for the benefit of any third party." So the applicant, they can't sit here and then sue you under the JPA, and the JPA itself disclaims all third-party beneficiaries, which includes the applicant. And the second bullet point here, this is the application they signed and submitted to you. And I've just highlighted part that they acknowledged when they filed with you, that they're agreeing to spend their funds at their own risk in an attempt to secure this approval. And they're acknowledging that no approval is guaranteed, and that they're not going to come out from the city to reimburse it. This gets me to the Orange County thing, because again, it's been suggested a few times that somehow you all have to approve this because they have property rights. And I submit, the applicant has no property rights or entitlements within the city of Winter Garden. Right now, they're not in the city of Winter Garden. Any alleged property rights they have are in Orange County. And this is Table one point, one point four E, out of the county's comprehensive plan. And you'll see, when it talks about future land use, map designation, village, which Ms. Carson referred to. And you go over to the right, and it says, "One dwelling unit per ten acres, unless approved as a special planning area." This site is not a special planning area. I can assure you, like I already mentioned, they would not be here this evening if they could get what they wanted more easily from Orange County. And certainly, if they could get more rooftops, oh, they'd go there because they can make more money on the rooftops. That goes us into the first issue. This evening, proposing annexation, this is a slide you've already seen, so I'm going to go through it fast, but it bears repeating. Nothing in the JPA requires you to annex this property, and nothing in the JPA excludes or exempts this property from complying with Chapter one seventy-one. In fact, when you approved the Eighth Amendment, your city manager instructed you of that, that you weren't obligated to annex the property. So we've touched upon this before. There are three key issues for annexation. You've got to be contiguous, you've got to reasonably combat, and not create enclaves. So this is the staff report. I'll put the whole thing in here. This is what's been circulating since last September. You'll see the highlighted portion. It says, "The purpose of this report is to evaluate the proposed project for compliance with the City of Winter Garden Land Development Regulations, Comprehensive Plan, and Future Land Use Map." And where in there is there a statement that is being analyzed for compliance with Chapter one seventy-one? You go to page two, nothing about the annexation law. You've got pages three and four, nothing about the annexation law. You've got five and six, nothing about the annexation law. In fact, the conclusion by your staff, again, says, and it highlighted, that annexing the property is consistent with the city's comp plan, future land use map, and land development regulations. This evening is the first time we're hearing anything about potential compliance with one set of rules. So the staff report is not CSE on the annexation issue, respectfully. There's nothing in it. Then you say, okay, well, what did the applicant do? We've introduced the applicant's application. There's no analysis about the annexation. And then, when Ms. Binkler raises this issue back in October, two thousand and twenty-two, this is not some issue I tried to sandbag the city commission with. Ms. Binkler raised this over six months ago. The applicant submitted a response, which is in my binder, their complete response. And their response is on the, after the second bullet, it says, "We do not believe the annexation creates an enclave. Ms. Binkler's property connects to other unincorporated parcels in the south and west." Respectfully, that is not the complete definition of an enclave. That's the more common definition of enclave. In fact, Ms. Dedenbach, Dr. Dedenbach acknowledged that in the planning analysis that we've submitted into the record. Usually, you view an enclave as an area of unincorporated property that's entirely bounded on all sides by municipal property. On the slide is quoted the entire definition from the statute. And Mr. Williams indicated that I'm hiding the ball somehow or not, being transparent. You have two definitions of an enclave. Under sub A, "Any unincorporated improved or developed area that is enclosed within and bounded on all sides by a single municipality." We have not made that allegation. That's not our allegation. Then there's the key word, or, so there are the alternative. B, "Any unincorporated improved or developed area that is enclosed within and bounded by a single municipality and a natural or man-made obstacle" "that allows the passage of vehicular traffic to that unincorporated area only through the municipality." Your own staff and Mr. Williams have acknowledged that the only way to get to my client's property is on Tilden Road. Their argument is just, well, Tilden Road's a county road. Well, you can see the Orange County versus City of Apopka case right there. They reject that argument. But the fact that the property is bounded on one side by a county road somehow precludes the creation of an enclave. So the suggestion that it's not an enclave because there's Tilden Road, that's the court. This is the court in town, the line circuit, which has jurisdiction over Winter Garden. They rejected that contention. So at the last meeting, it suggested that somehow you all couldn't rely on the maps and diagrams and the aerials that I submitted, that we had to have an expert witness. Which again, is not, is not the law. Though we might have retained one. You have Dr. Dedenbach's resume, which has more than twenty-six years of professional experience. She's a professor at University of Florida. And we asked her to evaluate this middle for compliance with Chapter one seventy-one. I would emphasize, as mentioned, Ms. Dedenbach's planning analysis. She was the expert planner in the McBride case versus City Center Hill. She had opined in that case that the annexation created an impermissible pocket. The circuit court agreed with her opinion, went up to appeal, put this court of appeal, and now is one of the leading cases on pockets in Florida. There are only two published decisions that we've dealt with, and I'm aware of, about pockets. So you can see Ms. Dedenbach's conclusion regarding whether this proposal is contiguous, which is one of the things Ms. Carson spoke about for the first time this evening, although I'm not allowed to ask her any questions about it. But you'll see, Ms. Dedenbach took a similar approach, although she went one step further than what you do when a statute doesn't define a term, because the statute does require a substantial portion of the boundary to be touching. She went to Marion West versus Dick Cherry, which is also what the leading appellate case on contribuity is done. And it means considerable imponer. She measured the boundary as well, and she actually has a slightly higher percentage, Ms. Carson, and her conclusion is, that's not a substantial part of that boundary. It's not fifty percent, it's not fifty-one, it's not seventy-five percent. This is thirty-something percent of that boundary touches. That's the minimum. So she's opined that it doesn't comply with the contribuity requirement. But let's assume, for sake of argument, it is contiguous. We then asked Ms. Dedenbach, analyze whether it creates an enclave. And this is a block quote out of her analysis, which again, you all have. And you'll see that she acknowledges that traditionally, we regard the enclave as totally bounded. But that's overlooking the definition in sub句 of being the statute. And highlighted, Ms. Dedenbach says, "The effect of the proposed annexation, if approved, would be to enclose an unincorporated parcel within and bounded on the east, west, and north by incorporated parcels, and bounded on the south by a natural and man-made obstacle." This would allow the passage of vehicular traffic to and from the unincorporated area only through the city of Winter Garden. And again, she talks about the access and the like, and points out, if the annexation does not meet the test, you will not create an enclave. And you have burdens on the applicant to demonstrate this. I don't think the burden is on your staff to demonstrate it. So here are some documents that we submit are relevant. Again, they're all in the binder, but the image on the left, that's an aerial. You can see, that's outlined in blue, is my client's property. You can clearly see the natural and man-made obstacles to the south and the west. You've got wetlands, you've got a subdivision to the south that's been developed, you've got a subdivision to the west that's been developed, and you have multiple storehouses that are man-made. Then, I went a step further. I put the plats for the property to the south, to the extent that the applicant's representative claimed, well, we connect to the south. You'll see, those are the plats for Orchard Hills and Stillwater Crossings. That's the site immediately to the south. You'll see that the adjoining property is denoted as greenbelt. Not to mention, there's little road houses that you can't travel through. And then Stillwater Crossings, that's denoted as a wetland, it's a conservation area. So again, those man-made and natural obstacles box us in. And we can only get to them from Ms. Binkler's property, from Tilden Road, which the case, the court here in town has already rejected the argument that the county road bordering our client's property prevents the enclave. Let's assume it doesn't create an enclave. We go to whether it creates pocket. Ms. Carson did offer a whole lot of testimony on this. She did not even state what pocket is on her Florida wall. I've quoted it in the first bullet. That's from the McBrady case, where Dr. Dedenbach was deemed accepted expert. Mr. Williams seemed to suggest that the courts have confused pockets and enclaves, and maybe it's this vanishing requirement. It's spelled out right in the statute. You can't do an annexation that creates an enclave or a pocket. And the reason so is because you don't want confusion in services. But Mr. Williams said, we have to include the entire sixty-five acres as such as the fifteen acres. The fifteen acres is the pocket. That's the area where the confusion lies. So again, you'll see Ms. Dedenbach's opinion on the bottom, and she talks about the McBride case and how the definition, her analysis of a pocket was accepted. And I'm reading the highlighted part. Here, "The effect of the proposed annexation would be to create a small area of unincorporated property in the area of largely incorporated parcels." And it can result in confusion regarding services. And I think maybe at the March hearing, some folks have already spoken to that, that there have been accidents on Tilden Road. When you call EMS, they'll ask, what side of the road is it? Because if it's on one side of the road, it's a county road. If it's on the other side, it's a state. So now, that's going to be, in my opinion, exacerbated, I know, bringing in another parcel. Well, let's go through the, uh, let's go through the smart accounting maps from the, that Peter showed before. You have a complete ordinance that's nailed on the record. But Mr. Williams testified that we can't create a pocket, because I think he said eighty square miles of unincorporated area. If you can see the little mouse here on the screen, everything right there, all this is all unincorporated property in the Martin County case. It's connected to this area. So they annexed F seventeen, they boxed in the yellow area, the court said that's a pocket. So the developer got creative, like we talked about last one, said, we're going to chop off some of that property. So the yellow area is what they found in the pocket. All this area where my mouse is going around, you can actually see it right here. I'm underlining what the mouse, city limits. Everything out here, that's all unincorporated. The pocket is the small, isolated area. That's what a pocket is. Otherwise, we'd be talking about enclaves and the like. Here's the other annexation in Martin County. This one's a little tighter, they've got the little strip. Everything north of that road is unincorporated. So the developer tried to get creative and said, well, we're going to list out more land. So they created a bigger opening, they took out ten acres, so it's a much bigger opening. Again, everything to the north of Northwest Jensen Beach Boulevard is unincorporated. The pocket is the small, little area that's boxed in, is the fifteen acres in this case. So the suggestion that somehow we misrepresented the Martin County cases, I feel is just respectfully inaccurate. That, again, is what the pocket is. It's the small, little area that's bounded, but not fully enclosed by the incorporated property. If it was fully enclosed, it'd be an enclave. We wouldn't be talking about the pocket. So let's go to the rezoning criteria. There are six. We again assert that the proposed rezoning doesn't mean, three of them. You don't even need to get to this issue if you reject the annexation. And I submit, we shouldn't annex based out of fear. And I submit, you shouldn't annex based out of fear of what the county will or won't do. They got one dwelling per 10 acres right now. They would be knocking on Orange County's door if they could get more than that easily. So the first thing is our claim that's inconsistent with the comp plan. Mr. Erdman, I'm sure will agree with me. The comp plan is your most important guiding document. It's the Constitution, it's been equated to a Constitution for land use and future development. You guys should currently comply with it. So this is at page 30 of the staff report. I've lifted it verbatim. The requirement, "Proposed PUD is consistent with the Land Development Regulations Comp Plan and Future Land Use Map." That's the requirement, right? That's what this board has to determine based on the evidence introduced. The staff analysis on that is, quote, "The proposed PUD is consistent with the city's land development regulations, conference plan, and proposed future land use map." See other portions of this report concerning consistency with the land development regulations. That is the conclusory statement. And we've already touched upon the Elliott Point case, the documents simply say, yeah, you comply with all our regs. That's not CSE under Florida law. So I'm not going to bring up the other complaint policy I mentioned about Jones to Housing. I don't think they demonstrated that, but I want to emphasize the one that's much more important, probably many folks have run into that, is your multimodal transportation element, It's quoted verbatim, "No final development permit shall be issued..." dot, dot, dot. "That will create a dangerous traffic/pedestrian situation." So there's no dispute where the subdivision is, there's no dispute it's on a 90-degree turn, there's no dispute that this is a dangerous roadway segment. In fact, Mr. Williams, again, admitted during his testimony this evening, that there's multiple accidents including people going into the pond. So then you can see the site plan below, and I've highlighted a key thing, because this came up at the last hearing, the suggestion that there's not a sidewalk, that they're not being required to put a sidewalk on Tilden. This is their site plan, it says, "Six-foot sidewalk along Tilden Road." So this is where the traffic safety issues come up. This is not me making legal argument. These are people asserting it, and you heard from them at the last two hearings. The first bullet is from the DRT memo that's in our packet, where the staff said, "The conditions of this blind spot are one of the central themes of the community's concerns of the community meeting." So it's been a long-running issue. Then you have the West Orange Country Club. I would submit the letter that's being stated that they support this development's not necessarily the case. They said, "We could potentially support a development if our concerns are addressed." One of which, they wanted a 50-foot setback along the golf course, which is not being provided. They also want the dangerous curve to be resolved because of the auto accidents. But then, the bottom bullet point is, I think, the most important one, because the applicant themselves has admitted there's a pedestrian safety issue, and they say, quote, "There are no sidewalks along the south side of Tilden to connect." There is a sidewalk along the north side of Tilden, but due to the tight curve in Tilden, a pedestrian crossing at the proposed entrance location would present a significant safety concern. That's not my words, that's the applicant's own words. Significant traffic safety concern. So then we get to the point, well, is there a sidewalk? Is there not a sidewalk? What's going on here? Because it was suggested at the last meeting in the rebuttal that, oh, no, that's because of the traffic safety concerns, that's why we're not requiring them to do a sidewalk out on Tilden, which I would say, that's going to be a distinction without a difference. But you can see the site plan on the screen, the red line I added. You can see a six-foot sidewalk along Tilden Road, it's called out on their site plan. So it's going to be a sidewalk on their side of the street with no crosswalk. Condition G18 of the proposed rezoning ordinance, unless it's been revised since the agenda was published, states, "Minimum five-foot concrete sidewalk shall be constructed along all street frontages, including Tilden Road." So whether there's a sidewalk there or not, to me, is sort of irrelevant, because the suggestion that, let's say we don't do the sidewalk on the north side of Tilden, they're going to tell me that no kid, no adult, nobody walking their dog is going to come out of this development and say, "I want to go and walk, I've got to get across Tilden Road," because that's where the established pedestrian network is. It runs all the way up and down Tilden, it goes to Emerald Ridge, it goes all the way down to Winter Garden and Apopka Island Road. So, and again, you don't need to take my word for it. The best evidence on this is the applicant themselves, they acknowledge it presents a significant safety concern if they're to put the crosswalk. So we're not going to put the crosswalk, but I guess, I guess people are just going miraculously not decide to cross the road. And I just think that that's a completely unsupported inclusion of logic. That brings us to our second argument on the rezoning, it's criteria two and three, they're essentially the same, so we argue with them together, and that's that the proposed rezoning is not going to substantially devalue or prevent reasonable use and enjoy the adjacent properties, which is our client's property. You've seen this already. This is the Tilden Place staff report on the left. This is your staff report from the night before this evening. The analysis is exactly the same. It just got cut and paste. There's no underlying factual analysis about what's taken place since Tilden Place got developed. You heard Ms. Carson try to allude to some of it this evening, but she didn't tell you the full story, in my opinion. And then this was the applicant's suggestion for riders compatibility. They asserted our client's property is undeveloped. Our client's property is developed as a horse farm. And you've already heard the testimony about the adverse impact that resulted in. So this goes to the buffer allegation. You've heard that they're providing this 25-foot buffer along the shared property line of highlighted on the top. That's actually a misrepresentation. There's been a 25-foot buffer provided along that shared property line. That's the building setback, and that's the exact same building setback that Tilden Place has on the eastern side of our client's property. So when the staff is asserting, well, Tilden Place is irrelevant, I submit that it's wholly relevant, because they're doing exactly what Tilden Place did. They're putting two-story houses except for one lot, 25 feet from the training facility, the jumping facility part of our client's property. You also see on the bottom, that's right out of the applicant's PowerPoint presentation from May 25, because there's been lots of talk, there's been bamboo buffer all the way along this. Notice where the green line is. The green line is, that's their diagram. The only thing I added was the red circle. The bamboo is along the Stonewater Pond, it skips the three houses with the 25-foot setback, which we all know, they can drop a pool in there and other stuff, and then it continues on the open space track. So I would submit, the buffer is not in the most important place where it should be, it's right along those three homes. So the suggestion by staff that somehow, no, no, we're digging into the compatibility and the adverse impacts experienced from Tilden Place, because they're going to do this bamboo buffer. They're not even doing it along with three lots in question. Deep-foot fence, six-foot fence, PVC vinyl fence, PVC vinyl fence. We demonstrated in the videos at the last hearing, the kids pound the balls against them, everything else, which has caused the horses to run into things. So what does 25 feet look like? You see it up there in the top left, that's what 25 feet from the property line looks like. And you can see in the top right, that's a two-story house looking through, that's bamboo on the east side. Those are three rooftops there. They look down right onto the Binkler Horse Farm. These are just further back. You can see three rooftops, a little large, 25 feet from the property line. And we saw this image before, and this is fact-based evidence, it's not legal argument. All these photos are evidence. This is damage to a horse head after it was spooked by a loud noise from Tilden Place Development, and ran into the barn and hit its head. But again, I don't think anything about that's reasonable. And then this diagram sort of sums up where it will be if you all end up approving this. It's the boxes on the left, on the red, are areas that have been directly and adversely impacted by houses in Tilden Place. And a lot of times, like I said at last hearing, you guys have a difficult job, and a lot of times, you're put in a position of having to guess, like, well, is putting a super target here a good idea? Is putting a, you know, dog sitting or dog daycare place in here? You all have the benefit of sort of a test run of what houses do when they're 25 feet from this horse farm. You don't need to guess. I'm not asking you to guess. I'm asking you to hear what the trainer said, and Ms. Binkler said, and what these photos demonstrated. The two red boxes, three of them are horse pastures, one of them is the $100,000 automated horse walker. All of those have been adversely impacted. Our client has not used that automated horse walker unless they're out there supervising full-time, because if there's a noise or something, the horse can get seriously injured on that. The green area on the eastern side of the property, that's everything that potentially will be adversely impacted by this project that we approve this evening. So what that will leave my client is the little dirt area in the middle of her property and a couple of pastures in the back. And I submit, that's unreasonable. One of the most important critical areas on her site, you can see in the north part of the green rectangle, is the training arena, where the horses are jumping and people are practicing the jumping. I certainly don't want a horse holding back on a jump, jumping and falling and getting injured, you know? We all know the recent accident that highly publicized horse event where the horse fell over after a jump. So again, those are where the houses are. They're on that shared eastern boundary, and this is, this is your choice this evening. The opposing side says, "It's truly that simple." I guess, you know, sometimes lawyers don't agree on something, but I'd say that in this case, on this point, it is sort of simple. On the left, you've got the before, and on the right, you have what it's going to look like after. So what? So the fence goes up another foot or so. That's what houses 25 feet from the horse farm look like, and they've had a huge negative impact. Ms. Binkler suffered a concussion, they've had horse injuries, and like, they've had trespassing on the property, everything else. So again, I appreciate your patience and embolgedance, and I respectfully ask you to deny the annexation.